Okay, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 17th public meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Okay, under report of the President, President McKay is downstate attending a very important event that his oldest son is attending, so he has an excused absence tonight. Good for Mike, family first. Okay, under presentation, Queen City Marathon for Active Water hosted by Queen City Striders. Stacy, if you would please?
Yeah.
We've got to get you ahead of the sheriff.
My name is Stacy Calder and I'm here on behalf of the Queen City Striders, our local running club, and I wanted to present to you guys about a new event that's coming to Allegheny County. It's called the Queen City Marathon for Active Water. It's a 26.2 mile running event that's going to be, it starts and ends in Cumberland at Canal Place. It's utilizing the canal and the Great Allegheny Passage, and it should be a really neat event for our community. We don't currently have a marathon, we have a lot of running events, but there aren't any local marathons. The closest one I'm aware of is in Shepherdstown in the fall, so we'll be the only local marathon in the spring, and of course, the only one we have here in Cumberland. So as of this weekend, the USATF came and measured our course, we're going to be a Boston qualifier, which for the runners, it's a pretty big deal because you have to qualify for Boston, so we should be a 2015 Boston qualifier, and we've had a lot of support from local businesses already, but of course, we're still looking for sponsors. We are a 501(c)(3) registered event through the Road Runners Club of America, so we are, if there's any business owners that want to get involved, we would love to have more sponsorship. We're also hoping to bring in runners from all over the country. We started registration in September, and we already have five different states represented with our runners, so we're hoping that that expands as the race gets closer, and we're also, of course, looking for volunteers for race day to help with the different operations. The folks that, I have to give Bobby Dick a shout out here, they've been very helpful getting, see down here? He's been very helpful getting the course situated and getting everything underway so that we can be all set.
And the date?
Oh, yeah, March 29th, 2014. So if you're looking to train for a marathon, you've got about 22 weeks, which is plenty of time.
Creed and I will sponsor the sheriff if he'll run that marathon.
You'll run with him.
I think she said it was 26 miles. That is fantastic news, and we're great that you was able to bring that to our area. If there's anything that we can do to help, please let us know. And since the sheriff is here on a serious side, when it gets closer, he's a good one to talk to, especially for traffic control, because he has use of the fire police, so...
Well, the great thing about the course is it really won't affect traffic. The Baltimore Street, where Canal Street crosses Baltimore Street, we'll have an officer stationed there, but that's the only road closing that we should have.
Well, great, fantastic, that's good news, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What will be the finishing point? I know Canal Place is...
It starts and ends in Canal Place. The first, it'll run the canal down to about the Eugene Mason complex, and then back, and then the rest will go up to approximately mile 10, just past Woodcock Hollow on the Passage. And for those of you who aren't runners, we're hoping to combine it with the new event we started last year, which is the Queen City Chili Fest, and we're hoping to have a chili cook-off as part of our event and post...
After the race. We are interested in that.
Now I have your attention. So if you're not a runner, if you know anyone that cooks chili, eats chili, or anything like that, we're, there should be something for the whole family.
We're better eaters than runners, so...
Something about chili and running, something we got.
You want the chili after the run.
Stacy, this is no small endeavor.
It's not, no.
And this is a big deal.
Yes.
What's the total budget for something like this?
You know, we're, because we're a startup, we're just trying to cover things as they happen. So I, starting out, when we were first looking at numbers, it was about 15,000.
Right.
I'm not sure where we are right now, because some things have been donated. Beckman's Pharmacy has stepped on as our core sponsor, they're covering the certification costs, as well as our website. We do have a website, it's runthequeencity.com, and we're registered on race calendars all throughout the country, just trying to get the word out among runners. So in this first year, I can't give you an exact number, because there's a lot of things that we're getting prices on as they come up. We're hoping, the whole thing is for a charity organization called Active Water, which works globally to combat the water crisis, mostly in Africa and Asia. I'm actually an Active Water runner. I raise money and awareness through Team Active Water as a runner, which is what sort of brought on the whole project. And so it'll go to a global charity, but it's all very, what's the part I'm looking for? It'll be a very local community race.
Good deal.
And this is something you're hoping will go on beyond one year? This is something that would be reoccurring every...
Yeah, we're hoping it'll be an annual event, so people can train for it and plan for it.
Very good.
Well, if the sheriff runs, it'll be annual, right? It'll take him that long to get down and back.
Just make sure, just make sure you get him alone, so, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next, we've got item two, Sheriff's Citizens Award. Sheriff Robertson, please, sir.
Stacy, is there a wheelchair event for the commissioners?
No.
Okay, we'll work on that next year for them. Thank you, commissioners.
Sir?
Actually, it's a good day. I have actually two events here to speak to you about. I'm kind of happy to be in front of yous to go over, and if I may, the first event, or the first thing that I have on the agenda is, of course, the Sheriff's Citizens Award. This is actually the first award that I've given out for this, since I've been in office now for, you know, a little over three years. So this is the first time that I've given out an award like this. But a little rundown is, on August 28th, and then again on September the 3rd, 2013, the Susquehanna Bank located at 963 National Highway into La Velle unfortunately, was a victim to two armed robberies, one on each of those days. During the second armed robbery, our dispatch center received a telephone call from a private citizen who provided them with some information, description on the suspect's vehicle, and a direction of travel. With that particular information, we were able to get involved unfortunately in a small foot chase, but were able to actually apprehend the two individuals responsible for the armed robbery at that location. And in turn, throughout that investigation, we were actually able to close the second armed robbery, which was still an open case on April, that occurred on April, or, I'm sorry, August the 28th. You know, many times citizens don't want to become involved in incidences like this, but when they do, the results sometimes are remarkable, to say the least. This is one of those cases. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jay Cutler, and present him with a plaque expressing my gratitude for his assistance to Allegheny County law enforcement that day. With the involvement from citizens like Mr. Cutler, Allegheny County is a better place today, and again, I'd like to thank him for that. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Cutler come up here, and actually, since, I'd actually offered and invited the Maryland State Police, who wanted to be present, however, the lieutenant at the barracks is getting married Saturday, so he's got some things to do, so Lieutenant couldn't be here. But if I could ask, since Mr. divorced here, because the phone call actually did come through that was made to the 911 center, if Dicky would come up here while I present this to you.
Absolutely.
And with the award, it says, Sheriff's Citizens Award presented to Mr. Jay Cutler in appreciation of his assistance to Allegheny County law enforcement on September 3rd, 2013, in the apprehension of two bank robbery suspects dated, today dated October 31st, by Sheriff Robertson. So Jay, thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Sheriff, much for bringing...
Bring him up, please.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
It was fun. It was like cops.
Excellent.
You guys are handsome.
Yeah, next on item three, we've got a synthetic marijuana DVD, and it was produced
by your department, correct, Sheriff, or put together by your department?
Yeah, actually, you know, over the past couple of years in Allegheny County, and actually in Maryland and the United States, we've actually seen a rise in the use of synthetic marijuana and synthetic methamphetamine, which maybe is that of like cocaine or methamphet... that amphetamine. We decided, we wanted to get something out to the kids, because the problem we found with this particular, these particular drugs is they can be purchased over the counter. We're fighting to try to get laws that will limit this and will make it illegal, however, sometimes trying to keep up with the chemists who make these compounds is top on law enforcement. So I wanted to do some type of a DVD that we could take to the kids in the schools and educate them on exactly what synthetic drugs are and what the effects are. I had a conversation with Joe Caparrelli from Magic Radio Station. Joe had said that he would be more than happy and wanted to be involved in this project, and offered his assistant along with his brother Brian, who, by understanding Brian, his brother actually did some photography work and video work at the US Olympics in Lake Placid, am I correct?
It's actually Greece.
Was it in Greece?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought it was in, okay. So his brother Brian had some experience when it came on that end, and then in turn, Joe was able to get John Lombardi from Frostburg State, John, is it Dr.?
Yeah, it's a doctor.
I didn't want to, you know, take that away from you, of course, but anyhow, John's in charge of the, one of the media departments at Frostburg State University, and Frostburg State offered their help in actually making this production for us. So this is actually the first time, except the Board of Education, some of the people have seen it there, but this is the first time that the public has actually seen this video. It's about 15 minutes long, and we'd like to give you at least the first opportunity to look at the effects of the synthetic drugs that we're dealing with today.
Thanks, Beth.
Taken from the computer, everything else is done locally. The other thing was, and again, it goes to show with law enforcement, and also we're looking here with a lot of fire departments and EMS people, the other thing that we have to deal with is the individual they were talking about, the jump to the plate glass windows, he was also hepatitis C. So that's another issue that law enforcement, fire companies, EMS has to deal with, you know, you have an individual like that, you know, you respond to what you're doing, you're also dealing with some contagious diseases too, that you're not aware of maybe until you get to the hospital. With that being said, that's what we're going to be presenting to the kids in school, we're working with the Board of Education, trying to get that underway. We've already got some dates scheduled for Allegheny High School, also we have dates for Fort Hill and the Career Center, all three of them, and the Health Department's been helping me out on that, Chris Delaney's been wonderful to work with. But with that being said, I felt that it was only fitting that if I could have Joe and John come up here, is, for all the work that they've done, we've been working on this how long, Joe, it's been?
Nine months.
Nine months probably, or, you know, maybe more than that, that we've been working on this now for that period of time. And I do appreciate it, because I think it is going to be something that's going to open up, hopefully open up the kids' eyes as to what's out there and what the effects and what could happen to them. So what I have, it's a Sheriff's Service Award, this one here says, presented to Mr. Joseph Caparrelli for his time and commitment in educating the students of Allegheny County on the dangers of synthetic drugs, dated October 31st this year, Sheriff Craig Robertson. Joe, I appreciate all that you've done. Second, it's same wording, it's just going to be in John's name, and John, I appreciate all you've done, you, and Frostburg State itself, you know, everything you guys, the work you've put, I really do appreciate that, so thank you so much. Of course, Joe, your brother couldn't be here, but I also have one from Brian, I'd like to give that to you if you would, to make sure that Brian gets the whole thing.
I want to have her some pictures.
Yeah, we'll get a picture here. I appreciate it, really good, Sheriff. Okay.
Thanks, Sheriff. Yes, sir, thank you, Sheriff. I know that's been a long battle with this synthetic drug, it's been, what, a year you've been working on all this altogether?
Probably over a year, but we started with the delegation who actually worked with us, you know, in doing some law...
Actually, a year and a half, because it was in March of last year when he approached us about this, so, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll get right into the action agenda. Allegheny County Board of Elections Memorandum of Understanding for Early Voting. Diane, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. In preparing for the 2014 elections, I have presented you with the memorandum of understanding for use of Room 212 for our early voting site once again. The early voting dates for the 2014 election for the primary, they're going to be June the 12th through the 19th, the hours from 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., and then Election Day for the primary is June 24th. Then for the general election, those dates will be October 23rd through October 30th, again, the hours from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., with the general election day on November the 4th. You will notice that we have added two additional days to the early voting schedule and have increased the hours on Sunday to be consistent with the rest of the days. The deadline to file a certificate of candidacy for the upcoming election is February 25th.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I guess we need a motion to enter into agreement of memorandating of understanding with the Board of Elections for use of Room 212?
So move.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, item five, resolution number 13-19 for fiscal year 2012 and 2015 Cumberland Area Transportation Improvement Program Amendment. Roy, please, sir.
Commissioners, this again is one of these housekeeping actions that you need to take acting as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Because of the requirement for the plan to be fiscally constrained, it's not until the funding is actually assured that we can put it into the plan, but it needs to be in the plan for the funding to be available. So at any rate, this would add $6 million to the surfacing and rehabilitation line item in the plan for state highways administration. It's a 80% federal dollars and 20% state dollars, and this is before fiscal 2014.
Very good, Roy, that's actually good news. I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution number 13-19 for the 2012-2015 Cumberland Area Transportation Improvement Program Amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, thank you much. Okay, next, item six, Fiber Optic Facility Construction and Revenue Sharing Agreement. Mr. Diaz, Director of Economic Development and Community Service, sir.
How are you?
Fantastic, and this is more good news, right, Matt?
Well, you know, there's good news and there's bad news to this one. I was going to say, when you said good news with Roy, you know, so I'll let you decide. I mean, there is a cost to everything, but, no, the item six that you have in front of you, the fiber optic agreement and revenue sharing, that's the agreement, with the Maryland Broadband Cooperative, will essentially provide backbone or middle mile fiber from Warrior Drive in Crescent Town to the intersection of Route 956 and Route 220 South, which is the location of the Barton Business Park. A few years back, the state of Maryland was the recipient of BTOP funding through the federal government, through the stimulus program to provide backbone fiber throughout each county in the state of Maryland. Allegheny County was the benefactor. From that grant was one of the, all the counties benefited, but Allegheny County's received fiber access and backbone fiber to schools, public facilities, state highway garages, libraries, things like that. Economic development and private business was sort of a, was not considered the main focus of that program. However, there was a resource share agreement between the BTOP group, which was managed by Do-It at the Maryland Department of Information Technology and the Broadband Cooperative, which will enable private industry to tap into the fiber. So we took the initiative through the Commissioners, first step, when you allowed the Broadband Cooperative to set up a POP in the industrial park here a few years back, that was the first step, and because of your actions there, we're now able to extend fiber to the business park on Route 220 South. The price tag is $220,000, and the revenue share, part of this agreement will enable the county to recoup 50% of that cost per each customer that comes on the line. The Broadband Cooperative will handle all the operation and maintenance and marketing of that line, so it's just another piece of infrastructure that hopefully will make the business park and make any business, large or small in that area, have the ability to tap into high-speed internet.
Well, that's fantastic, Matt. Once, if this gets approved, how long will it take to get this in?
The timeline on that, actually, I came, I was at a meeting in Kaiser yesterday, and as I drove up 220 South, there were actually guys out there surveying the poles and the ground from Crescent Town in, so I know that's underway, the pre-engineering. The timeline has this completed around mid-January.
Oh, good.
So it's, you know, the weather can obviously be the wild card on this, but if things stay on path, I would assume by first of the year, shortly thereafter, we should have the ability to have this as available. The second part to this, and it's the next item, and Beth will expand upon that, is the Alconet expansion. So actually, we have two really good pieces of news tonight related to high-speed internet, both on the wireless side and the fiber side, so this is really a big step forward for us, I think.
Good, sir, thank you. Any questions, Bill?
No.
Okay, well, we need a motion to accept item number six, Fiber Optic Facility Construction and Revenue Sharing Agreement.
So move.
And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Thank you, Mike, or Matt, sorry.
They're both Bob-God guys.
Yeah. Okay, item seven, Alconet Backbone Microwave Upgrade Bid Awards. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening. The Alconet Partnership has met and recommended the award of the Alconet Microwave Upgrade to local firm Connects. As you may recall, the project will replace microwave links at six of our core tower sites, increasing our capacity across the core to giggy speeds, and then also improving the reliability of the network. So as Matt alluded to, another step in making sure that broadband is highly available in Allegheny County.
Very good. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept a bid award for Alconet Backbone Microwave Upgrade. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed. Item eight, Request for Proposal for Financial Accountability in the Fire and EMS Service. Mr. DeVore, sir.
Good evening again, Commissioners. What you have before you is a request for authorization for us to do a request for proposal to provide a review of the financial accountability practices within the Fire and EMS system in Allegheny County. And I know I have a number of people here in the audience, and in particular, here in the audience tonight, we have representatives from Bowling Green and Crescent Town Fire Departments are two examples of organizations that we have high confidence in that are doing it right, but if you reflect back, we've come through some very difficult times with a couple of organizations where we realized that things were not being done appropriately. So the goal of this study is to go out and sit down and meet with each one of those organizations, and then come back and make a recommendation through the Emergency Services Board as to the way financial accountability should be conducted in the Fire and EMS service, recognizing the fact that there are some organizations that have gone that extreme to go through the whole certified audit process to make sure they have their, all their i's dotted and all their t's crossed, and recognizing also there's organizations that cannot afford at this point to go through that process. So what we're hoping to receive back from this study is a list of recommendations that we can push out to our organization departments, so that they have in front of them the tools necessary to be able to provide, say, some consumer satisfaction, or, you know, get the public, so the public has faith that when they're contributing to the volunteer Fire and EMS system in Allegheny County, the debt money's going to good use and it's serving a great purpose. And with that being said, I know I have a couple Emergency Services Board members present with us, Don Mulaney from Flintstone is on the Emergency Services Board, Ken May, who also is on the Emergency Services Board representing EMS. We have Clarence Broadwater, who's past president and now current vice president of the Allegheny Garrett County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. I think Clarence wanted an opportunity to say just a few words.
Thank you very much. I was president in '08 and went back in again in '12, and hope to go back in again next year, and the main reason is because I like the fire service, I like the EMS, what they do for the communities, but with some of the bad choices have been made by individuals in some of the companies are really going to hurt us, because we depend on the communities and the Commissioners mainly to keep operating. Fire companies, there are no pay for that. When you go out, you vote on your own, you have to pay it. Our alone for our company is $17,000 for just the insurance. That's a lot of spaghetti dinners and turkey dinners and stuff like that. The money that we get from the paper gambling helps us, but we need some way to monitor this money, because we're going to lose the faith of the community, and if you don't have the backing of the community, you're really going to hurt. And I've been preaching this to the association, that several of them said that we really don't want anyone to be looking at our books or anything like that, we'll hand our own. This is not, is not for to tell you and dictate to you how to spend your money. The only thing I think that Mr. DeVore is trying to do here is to get some kind of a hold on it, where we know that the money that's coming in from the community and from the Commissioners is being used for the purpose of Fire and EMS to protect your community and the surrounding areas, and that's what we're, we really need some way to monitor this money. It's not that anyone is mean to be wrong, but there have been some mismanagements along the way that happens, because no one is watching. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, I also have in attendance as well, Tim Dayton, who represents the Fire Chiefs Committee. Tim, did you, okay. Okay, so in conclusion, what we're asking is, is that, we know we've got departments that are excelling at financial accountability, and we believe the vast majority of departments are doing a very, very good job of spending their funds and keeping track of it appropriately. So our goal is ultimately to raise the bar and to provide some confidence to the consumer that their monies are being spent appropriately. And with that being said, we ask for your favorable support on the RFP release, and also just a reminder, and if the news media could help us out here a little bit, we're getting ready to change our clocks this coming week. So when we change our clocks, it's a good opportunity for us to do... So, when we change our clocks, it's a good opportunity for us to do smoke detector awareness, change your clocks, change your batteries, and if you do not have a smoke detector in Allegheny County, you contact your local fire department, one will provide it to you free of charge, and in most cases, they will install it for you as well.
Good. Uh, one question. This study's being done at no cost to the department.
That's correct, sir. This, this study is being funded by the county at no cost to our departments.
Before we make a motion on this, I just wanna make it clear to everyone, 'cause, 'cause I know all three of us could ask us all the time, the volunteer fire departments are not a, a branch of Allegheny County government. They are standalone companies, they get certain monies allocated by the county, but we don't have direct control of volunteer fire companies. They are their standalone companies, and I think this is a great idea for some, just for accountability, just to cover themselves, so.
Absolutely, Commissioners, and I think if you look at it, the services that are provided by our volunteer Fire and EMS is mission critical.
Well, absolutely.
To, to keep them on good, sound, uh, footing is, uh, you know, paramount to us.
So, okay, well, do we have a motion for Request for Proposal for Financial Accountability in the Fire and EMS Services?
So moved.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Everly, what's on our consent agenda tonight, sir?
Commissioners, uh, on your consent agenda this evening, you're being asked to consider action on seven items. We have a board appointment to the Alternates Position for the Waste Industry, uh, position on the Solid Waste Management Board. Uh, we have two bid award items. Uh, one is for the miscellaneous bridge repair contract, and the other is for our new survey vehicle. We would like, uh, to declare two vehicles a surplus along with an older engine and transmission and proceed with disposal. Uh, we would like also your approval to convey ownership of a generator that was declared surplus two weeks ago to the town of Westernport. And I'll make note of the fact that, uh, when we, uh, uh, finally dispose of that vehicle into the town of Westernport, we need to communicate clearly to them that although it runs, uh, they will have a very difficult time getting parts, uh, from the general market. They may have to go to a scrapyard or something like that to get parts for that, but, uh, Commissioners, we always, also have a lease, uh, agreement with Canal Place for the, um, for office utilized by our tourism folks. And lastly, we have an MOU for our hazmat preparedness grant.
Very good. Um, I'll make a motion that we accept our consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Passed. Very good. Okay, I guess, uh, Mr. Everly, sir?
Nothing further, sir. Nothing further.
Mr. Rudd, sir, you gotta have something for us.
I, I do, actually. Uh, as you all may recall, we had an, a executive session of the Commissioners last Friday.
Yes, sir.
And we're required to read a statement into the record, uh, so it's in the minutes, and I will, unless you wanna read it, I'll be happy to read it on your behalf. It says, "It's a statement regarding the executive session held on October 25th, 2013, 11:30 a.m. The Board of County Commissioners, at a meeting convened on October 21st, 25th, excuse me, 2013, at 11:30 a.m., voted unanimously to go to an executive session. The meeting time and place and the purpose of the meeting were provided in a public notice distributed on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2013, at 11:11 a.m. The notice was provided by fax and/or emailed in the same manner and to the same entities as received notice of the Commissioners' regular public business meetings. The meeting was closed in accordance with State Government Article, Section 10-508 of the Annotative Code, and the purposes for, for which the meeting was closed were as follows. Number one, A, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction; or B, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals," and that's State Government Article, Section 10-508A1, "and also consultation with counsel to obtain legal advice concerning the matters referenced above," State Government Article, Section 10-508A7. Those in attendance for the closed session were Commissioner Michael W. McKay, Commissioner Creed V. Brody Jr., Commissioner William R. Valentine, County Attorney William M. Rudd, County Administrator David Everly, Brian Westvall, Director of Human Ser- Resources and Personnel Services, Paul Kale, Director of Public Works, and Cindy Young, Recording Secretary. Discussion was held concerning a request received from Ask Me concerning a grievance by a transit employee related to his rate of pay. Information was provided to the County Commissioners concerning the facts surrounding the grievance. Legal advice was provided by the County Attorney concerning the grievance as it relates to the union contract. The Commissioners voted to give specific direction to county staff as to how the grievance might be resolved. After the conclusion of the discussion concerning the grievance, the Commissioner voted, Commissioners voted unanimously to adjourn the closed session, and it was adjourned at 12:40 p.m."
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And I have nothing else.
Okay. Commissioner Valentine, anything for us this evening?
Uh, just a few quick things. Uh, as you know, approximately a month ago, the Commissioners, uh, decided to begin conversations with, uh, Allegheny College in Maryland about the Commissioners using, uh, gambling income from the Rocky, Rocky Gap facility to, uh, create a scholarship program at ACM. Uh, so, uh, on Monday, the 21st, I had a, another meeting with, uh, Dr. Bam- Bam Bear and a few other representatives from the college on, uh, how this scholarship's going to be handled. We will have a full rollout of this program, uh, hopefully first part of December. Uh, but then, uh, just this week, uh, we also had conversation with, uh, representatives from, uh, Frostburg University. Uh, we would like to extend scholarship money also to, uh, Frostburg University, so if Allegheny County resident students attend ACM on the scholarship, then if they decide to move on to Frostburg, they will also have scholarship money there if they meet the other criteria. So, this is a way to get our resident students a quality college education and to help keep them in Allegheny County. I think we all know, for too long, our students have graduated high school, left the area to be educated, and stayed out of the area. This way, we hope to, uh, help educate them, stay in touch with those students, and, uh, whenever it comes time for graduation, if there are students looking to create a business or looking for a job in certain industries, uh, the county may be able to give them a helping hand to keep them here to create their future.
Very good. I, I like that. I know that Garrett County funds 100% of the tuition, and, and it was just, that's impossible for us, but I hope that we can find a way to help some.
Basically, the way this will work is, uh, the students will have to apply for whatever grant they can get from the state, apply for whatever they can get from the federal government, then our scholarship money will fill the holes. So, it should make it, uh, financially feasible for our students to, to get a quality education right here.
Good. Uh, there's something, uh, for what I have tonight, is there's been a big push across the country to redoing our floodplains, and it's having a, a dramatic effect on Allegheny County. So, Commissioner Valentine, if, if you agree with this, I would like to get Administrator Everly to draft a letter for all three signatures to Representative Delaney, Senator McColsky, and Senator Carden, to please look into this, to see what we can do. What they're trying to do is they're trying to do ways of 100-year floodplain and make everything, just put it into 500-year floodplain, which has a terrible effect on Allegheny County. It, it, our housing stock here, it, it, this is a tough sell anyhow, and if someone buys a house and a floodplain, and, and they, they dictate the law where the floodplain is, which they're changing. The only people in, in the country that sells flood insurance is the United States government. It don't matter whose name's on it, it's all essentially backed by the government. And they're controlling the cost of it right now, especially with the recent disasters out in Colorado. And the last that I have talked with several people this week, their flood insurance has tripled from last year to this year, and it's supposed to triple again. Now, on a, and the, the, I guess, the example I was used is like on an $80,000 house that would be in the Georgia's Creek area, the flood insurance used to be $500 to $600 a year, now it's $3,000. And unless you're buying cash, a house, the bank requires you to have this insurance. So, something's gotta be done, or it's gonna empty our housing stock out worse. So, sir, if you could, get us something ready.
We'll do it, Commissioner.
We need some help on this, so.
And they've also not only raised the cost of the premiums, but they've redrawn the floodline.
Yeah.
There, there are buildings now that's listed as being in floodplains where there's no history of there ever being a flood, so.
And the funny thing is, the federal government, it has the history. From, from the floods of '85 and '96, the NRCS has, has accurate history that has to do with us, not someone sitting in Washington looking at us on a map just drawing a line. I mean, we, we have records, so, we're, we're gonna have to knuckle down and really fight this one, so, so, that's all I have for this evening. So, I guess we'll go right into constituents. First, we have, uh, Mr. Kleitz. Uh, please, sir, to the microphone, as you, when you get up there, please, we need your name and your address for the record, sir.
All right. First, I'd like to apologize for my appearance, because I was working on a tractor, and I just.
Oh, that's fine, sir. I don't worry.
About to meet. All right, my name's Robert Kleitz, I live at, uh, Flintstone, Maryland, Dry Ridge Road. Uh, it's, uh, two, yeah, I can't think of my box number.
That's okay.
I don't use it. But anyhow, I live in Flintstone, Maryland, on Dry Ridge Road, and what I wanted to cover, I have a petition and also have a letter. And it's about explosions that's going on on Martin's Mountain, which, uh, started in March, uh, '94, I guess. And we all, uh, we never knew where it was coming from, from, for a long time. If you'd like more than to take a note, so that I'll take a note that I'm telling you the truth. But, uh, we have explosions out there that's shaking our houses. It has knocked, uh, pictures off of the wall, and it's also cracked my neighbor's window. And I had one gentleman, when I got the petition set, uh, petition up, that said he was in the shower and his water stopped. Then it come back on. And, uh, and he was, uh, I have a letter here, uh, from the Allegheny Planning Zoning Commission, where this wasn't supposed to happen to start with. We all thought it was, uh, that after we found out where it was coming from, we all thought it was a federal, their, our government doing this, but it wasn't, it's a private company. And so, we, we have a letter here where, if you want me to read it, or would you like to read it?
No, we've seen the letter.
You want me to, I'll try to read it, I'll put it out, and I'm not uneducated. Man, don't read too well. All right, it says, uh, it's, uh, it says, "Dear Mr. Alexander, I met with you, I met with Ms. Jan Michaels of your company on March the 15th, 1994, to discuss a proposal of establishing a commercial land use of, on your property east of Town Creek in the Agricultural Zone District. As Mrs. Michaels described it, your company is engaged in research and developing of manufacturings of composites," or something like that. "Anyhow, a residential structure on the property is, is proposed to be converted into an office building. The building will employ as many as 13 persons at the site near Flintstone. Please be advised that the land used described above is not permitted. Use in the agricultural zoning districts, although, although Mrs. Michaels and I discussed whether the proposal, the proposed business fits the definition of the home occupation, it does not. A home occupation is intended to be an occupation of a resident of the property which does not involve an extension of modifications of the drawing or accessories, assess, uh, structure. Further future, the property does not have direct access to a paved county or state maintained highway, nor does it have the public water or sewer system that would be necessary for such a, a sizable workforce. It is Allegheny County polished to encourage, encourage commercial and industrial developments at these sites where the, I don't know that word either, uh, public facilities are available. We would suggest that you contact the Allegheny County Economic Development Department for assistance in finding the local, location of your business in the appropriate zoning district. You will find that the properties in the industrial park or major commercial zoning districts are served by public water and sewage facilities and have direct access to pub- public, they maintain roads. The Economic Development Department can be reached, that is the phone number. And it just says, "If you have any questions." But, uh, that's, that's what's happening out there, which we, which, uh, we didn't, we didn't know back then anything about this. And I don't know how, if I swept under the rug, I would say to somebody, "Did not do their job at that time." So, I'm hoping that you, uh, thank you for going out. I believe Mr. Valentine was out there today.
Yes, sir. I, I visited the property along with some other county representatives.
Yeah.
Uh, we took a look at the facilities. Uh, you will hear another explosion, probably middle of next week.
We heard one just today.
Well, you'll hear one probably the middle of next week. What we did, we requested the owner of the property to notify us, we are going to send some county representatives to Dry Ridge Road, they'll probably sit in front of your house and a few other houses.
You come in my house.
So, so that when they set off this charge, we can hear the effects of the charge. Uh, plus, he has also committed to us that he is, uh, going to begin construction of a noise containment wall, uh, probably as early as next week. By listening to the effects of a charge, without that wall being there, then, once the wall is constructed, we'll also have him set off a charge with that, that containment wall there, so that we can hear the difference in, in the effect of it.
How do we know that he's gonna set off the charges that he's setting off? He used to set off charges that didn't bother us like it does now. We didn't know where they was coming from, but when we found out, he didn't set off the charges, and they did not, uh, they did not vibrate our house, we just heard the noise. So, I, I don't, I don't trust that man.
Well, basically, the reason why you're getting the noise that you're getting now, he made a change in the structure where he's setting off the charges. He's not gonna change the charge load because his charge loads are basically the same every time. It's just, he changed the orientation of the area where he sets these charges off. He thought what he was doing was going to make it better. Actually, he realizes it made the sound carry towards your place. So, he's already looked at it, and he, he has told us, and we'll, we'll take him at his word right now, let him build this sound containment wall. But like I say, next week, when he sets off the charge, we will have representatives in your neighborhood, different locations, listening to the effect of that charge.
And there's one more thing that I can't, you can't prove that it happened, but I know that we've had water problems out there. And he says it don't vibrate the ground. Well, my house sits on the ground, and I can feel it in the basement. And I know that I had water at one time, and I could run 24 hours. Now, I ca- now I have to watch, because if I happen to leave a faucet running or something, I'll lose my water, and I have to shut it off, and then it takes about half hour, 45 minutes for my well to pick back up to give me water. But, uh, he says no, that don't bother the ground, but something bothered it.
Due to your petition, the county is now aware of the situation, and we will be monitored.
You need a petition? I have a copy.
We will take. I've got a copy of that on my desk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question about this. Victoria Malany, M.A.L.A.N.Y. Flintstone, we've heard the same thing, and we, you know where we live, Bill, so, it's quite a ways away. The thing of it is, what is the purpose? What, what's, what's behind all this? That's what I'd like to know. Mr. EMS, what, what is the purpose of the explosions and so forth and so on?
I'm not sure that we could actually say for, honestly, for, if, if we get into this, it's, it's national security reasons.
Okay.
Honestly, that, that'd be as far as I would comment on this.
And I, I've heard, I've heard the same explosions at my house on, on the east side of Town Hill.
Yes, it's a worst.
But, but the gentleman is going to be taking steps starting next week to build a sound containment wall. These charges are not huge explosions. I, we were at the facility today, where he sets these charges off are in very contained spaces, there's no disruption of the ground, there's no big holes as he's blowing in the ground. Uh, we actually had, uh, Maryland Department of the Environment with us today. Uh, they took a look at everything, so it is being we- very well monitored now.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the list, we have- Next on the list, we have Dave and Kathy Jewell. Mr. and Mrs. Jewell, if you would please. Oh, you just won't go up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Dave and I own the Mobile One Express out on 220 in Bel Air. And we're, we're here tonight to express our displeasure and frustration over an ongoing problem that we have and the way that zoning is, has handled it or not handled it. Our neighbor business, Lee Sullivan, who owns Showcase Homes, aren't in compliance with regulations on setbacks and things. They have a, a two-story home that sits on an angle close to the road that blocks our business sign. I brought pictures. Would you like to see them or?
Yes, please.
When it was put in, and we were told it was, it was temporary, it probably wouldn't be there long. But we're, we're coming up on about 10 years. So like every other business in the area, sales are down. And, you know, we're trying to do everything we can do to, to raise, get our numbers back up. And we contacted Mr. Squires last December, the first time. And, let's see. But basically, we've gotten nowhere. You know, it's, it's been almost a year. I have notes there from phone calls and pictures that we took this morning. We've complied with all of zoning's regulations. When we opened our business, you know, the, the sign had to be 30 feet off the road, the business, the building had to be back so far. We even went as far as, zoning made us repave 220 in front of our business because they said the road didn't, wasn't in county, you know, didn't come up to county specs. So, you know, we've, we've complied with everything over the years. My question is, why doesn't Mr. Sullivan have to comply? Why, zoning keeps telling me it's a temporary thing, it can be moved. It's not temporary. It's been there 10 years. I don't see any sign of, you know, you can see in my notes what, what, what we told zoning every time and what their replies were. We're getting nowhere. So, like I said, you know, why, why does every business in the county have to comply and Mr. Sullivan doesn't? That's my question to you all. And I'm hoping, I'm here tonight hoping that maybe you, you can do something about it.
In conversation with Mr. Squires, I don't know if this is a story you've heard before or not, but we are under the understanding right now that Mr. Sullivan has put in an application for a permit at a location where this modular.
They, they told me that probably nine months ago. And then they said Mr. Sullivan decided that the foundation wasn't, had deteriorated and wasn't, wouldn't be, he wouldn't be able to put that house on it. So, and then they said they were applying, that he was applying for permits and they were having trouble getting permits. Why if, he's got plenty of room where he's at. Why can't he just turn that building around and push it back and get it off the road like every other business on, on 220 so that you can see my sign? You can see from, you know, this is, this is back at, what's the name of the new business that just opened to get golf station? Penny's? This is back at Penny's. And you can see all, every sign is in line all the way up the highway. Mine's in line too, but you can't see it because this white house sets out and blocks it. So why isn't he made to be a county? Why doesn't he have to play by the same rules that everybody else does?
Commissioners, if I might interject here. We are, at this point in time, working with Mr. Sullivan to obtain his permit, to finish all the requirements to acquire that and to move this building. If we were to take a very rigid interpretation of our zoning code, and again, for many people, our regulations are black and white. However, the actual application of them makes it difficult from time to time to make sure that we're doing everything to try to, to encourage reasonable development, economic development in our county. A rigid interpretation of this, of this particular site would require that Mr. Sullivan move, move the structure, perhaps as much as 25 feet. In order for us to secure compliance, we could send him a letter. He could challenge it in court. And we're not confident that we would prevail, taking some level of code enforcement action at this time. We believe that the, the situation can remedy itself. We would like to take the, the angle that we could peacefully resolve this by having Mr. Sullivan just simply remove this, help him expedite getting his permit and moving this to another location that is close, close to this location.
This house has been here almost 10 years. It's not going to resolve itself.
Well, again, unfortunately, Mrs. Jewell, when we have two property owners that make a fundamental commitment not to get along, too often, the county finds itself stuck in the middle and, and we are going to, to the greatest extent.
We get along, we get along with great neighbors. I'm just asking for a reasonable amount here, and I've talked to Lee and Butch both before I come to you guys years ago. It was a temporary deal when this thing was put in. Butch and Lee was looking today, but they are great neighbors. You couldn't ask for better names. That's not what we're here about.
Good.
I'm just saying, the amount of money I invested in this facility, the taxes I pay for my signs and everything, and I have ExxonMobil to deal with also, but I'm just asking, back this thing up. My customers complained to me, they run by me. My phone rings all the day. They can't see my sign coming southbound. They just don't see it. It's just so confusing out there. You guys know this. And that's all I'm asking. Back it up. Customers can see my sign. It's lit. And that's all I'm asking is a business owner. But as far as neighbors, you wouldn't find better neighbors. We are good neighbors.
Good.
You know, we called zoning 10 years ago when they put it in there. And they said, well, it's a temporary thing. It's not going to be there long. Well, it's 10 years. So I think it's long enough. Let's do something.
And it's not a mobile home. It's a manufactured home. If it was a mobile home, it'd be different. But we're talking about a house, a manufactured house, two-story. I asked when this thing was put in. I talked to Lee and Butch on that day. They said this is only going to be temporary. So I just left it go. It's expensive to set a crane, to do all the work and things.
It is. It is.
I know what it is. So that's not what I'm asking. I give them ample time to do this. Now we're going to give them a permit to move it to a foundation that last month wasn't suitable to put it on? Only thing I'm asking, give me a date. I need to have a date saying we're going to have it moved by January, or we're going to have it moved by December is all I'm saying, you know. And I appreciate your time.
You know, he told, he told, he told Mr. Squires back in December that the house was sold and it was going to be gone in three months. So we gave him the three months and an extra one. We called back in April, okay, it's still here. Where are we? You know, everybody's dragging their feet. And it's like I told you on the phone the other day. Mr. Squires actually told me three weeks ago, I shouldn't be telling you this, but, you know, I, I've just been stringing you along here. He said, I, you know, I don't have any answers for you. He keeps saying trailer, it's, it's temporary. It's like a used car. It can be moved. We're not talking about mobile homes or trailers. This is a manufactured home, and this is a different code. And the code is 325-6. So I even said, has anybody checked that code three weeks ago when I told them? And the other day, they said no. So it's like they don't care. Nobody's trying to help us.
Mrs. Jewell, we, we do care. And we understand the circumstances, we believe, given the length of time that the building's been there.
What do you consider ample time?
Well, we were hoping that the, obviously, the structure would have been moved by now. Again, here we are tomorrow, will be November the 1st. I don't have all the specifics relative to the location of the new foundation and whether or not it can accommodate this building. We're not talking about a couple of weeks here. This could take many months.
It's already been 10 years.
Yes, ma'am. I know.
You know, we, we put our sign where you told us to put it, and he has blocked it. You cannot see it.
I guess our fear is, is if we were to take a rigid interpretation of the code and try to begin some enforcement action here.
Mr. Squires told me three weeks ago, the ticket was already written, and Mr. Michaels was taking it out the next day.
Okay.
Call back in a week and see how things went. I called Mr. Michaels and he knew nothing about it.
Okay. Well, I'm on the same page with Mr. Michaels there. Unfortunately, if we once again try to pursue a rigid enforcement action here, that building may not move for a long period of time. And what we're trying to do now is to work creatively with the property owner and have the structure moved. And, and if it takes four months, six months, I'd rather it take that period of time than two or three years if we, if we chose to litigate this one. And I know that's difficult news for you to take, but unfortunately, that's the reality that we're dealing with here. And again, our goal is to try to get the structure moved so that your customers can see your sign.
They don't have to move it off his property. He's got plenty. All he can do, you know, make him comply with everybody else, pull it back. He's got plenty of room there.
Well, I'm going to have an opportunity in the very near future to talk to Mr. Sullivan. So that will be one angle that we play. And I'm sorry that we can't offer you anything more tonight.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Jewell. Is there, that's it for the signups unless someone else has anything for this evening. Just the announcements, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, November 7th, at 5 o'clock in Room 100. Now, Compost Site Fall Schedule, see the news release. And we will be taking our meeting to Barton and see, the dates for that will be in the news release. And 9/11 Joint Communication Division has had a successful annual inspection, and that's also in the news release. So with nothing more said, everybody have a good evening. Watch out for trick-or-treaters tonight. So, meeting adjourned.